Uh, Mr. Brandon Root's gonna lead us tonight in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and appreciate the citizens of this community along with the support of our elected officials. We're very gracious to live in this community which is thriving and growing, and we pray to be. Blessed.
Blessed to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brandon. Next is a recognition of any elected officials present tonight. Thank you, Betsy. Next, we'll recognize any veterans that we have present.
Gerald Bristow, last station.
Brandon Root, uh, U.S. Army.
Steve Fajit, U.S. Army.
Y'all need to have some U.S. Army. Do y'all have one, like county fans? If you have one, appreciate your service. Next item will recognize any law enforcement present tonight.
They have Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Gerald Bristow, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, guys. And next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Manager.
Chris Moore, please.
Allison, any resources?
Thank you, guys. First item is to approve the agenda, so we're looking for a motion to adopt the proposed agenda or any items that need to be added to the agenda. Same move. So here are none. That's a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All right. Second. We have a motion second. Any questions or discussion? All right, here are none. All of us clerks will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, just say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a series of special presentations, and the first one will be Childcare Provider Appreciation Week. Ms. Ross?
Don't be nervous. Good evening. My name is Sharmonda Ross from Childcare Connections of Cleveland County. I'm Director of Provider Services on behalf of our Executive Director Gina Carter. This is Childcare Connection staff April McLean, Renee Dade, Erica Brooks, Leanne Sanders, and Shakira Nade. First years of a child's life are a period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation of all future learning. Children's cognitive, physical, social, and emotional language and literacy development are built on a foundation of children's positive interactions with adults' peers in their environment. Our early childhood programs are not just babysitters. They provide important benefits such as assessing, screening, and observing for delays, identifying and preventing child abuse and neglect, leading to positive outcomes for individual children, helping them to better prepare for children for school and more likely to succeed in life. High-quality early childhood programs depend on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children supported by families have early experiences they need for a strong foundation. According to the National Association for Education for Young Children, 15,856 childcare providers have closed their doors since the start of the pandemic. In North Carolina, 78 childcare providers have closed, and in Cleveland County, five childcare providers have closed since the start of the pandemic. The national average salary for childcare providers, who are skilled and valuable frontline professionals who have risked their health to provide education and care during the global pandemic, is $13 per hour. In North Carolina, the average salary is $11.83. Many of our childcare providers have, at great personal and professional costs, managed to keep their doors open during the pandemic to support our children and our families in our community. So on behalf of Childcare Connections and the Cleveland County Centers and Family Home Providers, which we have a couple today, we appreciate your support in efforts to increase children and family awareness of the importance of high-quality childcare by proclaiming May 12, 2023, as Childcare Provider Appreciation Day. When our county invests in our early educators, they invest in our children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a proclamation?
Yes, sir, I do. Childcare Provider Appreciation Day 2023. Whereas childcare Aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of Cleveland County's young children, families, and communities. And whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staffed predominantly by women, are still recovering from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic while they have continued to meet the needs of families. And whereas Cleveland County recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and as such, has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare. And whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners proclaim May 12, 2023, as Childcare Appreciation Day, and ask all citizens to join in to recognize and thank childcare providers for their important work. Adopted this the second day of May, 2023.
Thank you. You want to get a picture or?
Yes, please.
Next item will be the Motorcycle Awareness Month 2023, and to present that's gonna be Commissioner Weston.
Yes, um, we've been doing this for quite a few years now, and in fact, I think it was started even before I came on the board. So we always like to appreciate the motorcycle riders that we have in this county, they're citizens just like all the rest of us. Doesn't matter what type vehicle we drive, we all want to be safe on the roads. And right now, with grass just beginning to be cut, it really bothers me when I go down the street and somebody's blowing grass. If anybody's never ridden a motorcycle and you hit grass, it's almost like hitting ice on your car in the wintertime. It will throw you in the ditch. And most of the time when that happens, the motorcycle winds up on top of you instead of you on top of it. So that's one of the things that we try to bring awareness to. And Haley and Derek Bradshaw has been here, and they're here again tonight with the group. I'm gonna let our clerk, Phyllis, read the proclamation, and then we'll all come down and have some pictures, okay?
Motorcycle Awareness Month 2023. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas the National Highway Safety, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Motorcycle Safety Foundation have named May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, it's important for the citizens of Cleveland County to be aware of motorcycles on our roads and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas safe motorcycle operation is enhanced through a combination of rider training and experience, good judgment and observance of traffic laws, states and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorists' awareness and safety sharing the road with motorcycles. And whereas Cleveland County Commissioners encourage all operators of automobiles, trucks, and motorcycles to be conscientious of their respective responsibility on the roads in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners proclaim May 2023 as Motorcycle Awareness Month and ask all citizens to join in the effort to keep Cleveland County's roads safe for all. Adopted this the second day of May, 2023.
All right, the next item, uh, the next special recognition we're gonna take up tonight is Economic Development Week. Mr. Brandon Root?
Well, good evening. So take a little trip back in time. Throughout the late 90s, early 2000s, our community was devastated with the loss of the textile industry. And as soon as we started to pick up from that, the Great Recession hit, and we hit our highest level of unemployment in our community at seventeen, over 17% in 2009. And at that time, we were losing population. Folks weren't staying in Cleveland County. They were graduating high school and leaving, and we were a dying community. But our community decided to not sit back and die. Our elected officials and leadership and at all levels of government here locally decided to partner together and get creative on how we were gonna let businesses grow in our community. And some of those examples of getting creative is that Cleveland County is recognized in the state of North Carolina as running one of the premier shell-building programs, of which we've sold three and just finished the construction on number four. Also, not only just to facilitate large manufacturing operations to move into our community. We also support small business growth in our community through the Small Business Investment Grant, allowing small businesses and entrepreneurs to thrive and flourish in our community. And that effort has paid off. Since 2006, there's been $6.8 billion with a B of capital investment in this community, over 6,600 jobs, and we are nearing our lowest unemployment rate in the county's history. We're currently at 3.6. And our population is now growing. People like living in Cleveland County. They want to stay here, and our population is growing. So that's what I have to say. And it's all thanks to the community's support of large businesses creating that pro-business environment. And thank you.
Economic Development Week 2023. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And whereas the IEDC provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and Entrepreneurship Development Professional. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnership, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions, including Cleveland County and the state of North Carolina. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioner recognizes the week of May 8 through May 12, 2023, as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. Adopted this the second day of May, 2023. Please don't trip over cords.
Go small business.
We'll all take like two steps forward into the light. All right, three, two, one.
Brandon, especially got your two up here. What, come here. Why don't you explain the small business thing that we got that a lot of people don't know about?
I'd be glad to explain it because I try to tell everybody that comes along. If you are a business owner and you want to expand and grow your business, or a farmer, if you invest at least $50,000 up to $1,000,000 in that expansion, you can get three years of your property tax at half the rate.
For that investment?
For that investment that you make. So I encourage you, if you want to grow your business, take advantage of it. I have the application form in my office, so let us know if we can help you with getting that application filled out and turned in, and let's use some of these county guys' money and lady.
It's your money.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda will be recognizing the county clerk for County Clerk Week. So to give you kind of a brief background about the clerk to the board, his position of clerk is one of the oldest local government date back to biblical times and whose term has been associated with the written word, modern-day clerks, are official record-keepers of county, cities, and centralized or centralized organizational governments, council of governments. The clerk is sometimes described as the hub of the wheel or in local government calls, the central work that the clerk plays in the government's communication network. Their job to assist, their job is to assist the Board of Commissioners to ensure the board members have all the information needed and are ready to prepare for any meeting and event. They stay abreast of legislative challenges and make their boards, and make sure that their boards and staff stays aware of these changes. The clerks provides, provide a communication link between the citizens, local government body, administration departments, local government parties, and these, uh, any board clerk plays a vital role in county government, provide the written record needed to ensure that the board is accountable to the citizens and to other public and private officials. So with that, we also have a proclamation for this week for our clerk. So let me, I didn't realize I was gonna have to read all this, so.
I thought you could give it to another commissioner.
So, uh, so yeah, we're proclaiming the clerk of, uh, to the Board of County Commissioner Week. So whereas the office of the clerk to the board provides a communication link between the citizens, the local government body, and administrative departments, the local government partners, and whereas the North Carolina law requires everybody, either board of county commissioners to appoint a clerk, and the clerk continues in that position at the closure of the board, and whereas the clerk's most significant statutory duties concern the preparation of file and safeguard of the local government records, but the statutory duties constitute only a portion of what the clerk does. And whereas the clerk plays a vital role in county government and provides the written record needed to ensure that the board is accountable to the county's citizens and to other public and private officials, the clerks are involved at the state level as well as potential legislative and other matters of interest. And whereas local government, local government becomes larger and more complicated, the clerk's role as a professional, disporning provider of important information to the citizens, government officials, and the media becomes more and more important. And whereas although clerks work for the boards of county commissioners, they truly provide a public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners proclaim the week of April 30 through May 6 as the clerk to the Board of County Commissioner Week, and extends our appreciation to our clerk of the board, Phyllis Nolan, and to all county clerks for the vital interests or services they provide and their exemplary dedication to county employees. Adopted to date, May 2, 2023. So with that, we'll present this to our clerk.
Ironically, six years ago today, I was, you know, the board at that time officially hired me.
So six years ago today?
Please make sure you get my good side of cake, 20 pounds of.
So with that, there's your, there you go.
All right, three, two, one.
You did your rabbit pie?
Oh, I do.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Phyllis. Next item is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk?
Citizen recognition. The citizen recognition portion of a board commissioner's meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. In the event a group or person supporting or opposing the same position desire to be heard, the board chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson for the group. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. Speakers must discuss only items within the jurisdiction of the board commissioners. While speakers are free to discuss county employees and officials, the board requests that speakers be courteous and respectful in their comments. Speakers are prohibited from using profanity, or making threats of violence, or personal attacks against any person. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns. Guest speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this portion of a meeting. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
All right, so tonight we have two, Ms., uh, Reese Luce. If you'll come forward, state your name and address, and then.
Yes, my name is Reese Luce. I live at 509 West Sumter Street here in Shelby. I've lived here for all my life. I'm here tonight to address the mental health system in Cleveland County. I have a grandson, like many others, who has a mental health disorder. His happens to be bipolar paranoid schizophrenic. Because of our lack of qualified level facilities, we have seeked help as far as from Winston-Salem to Raleigh. The Phoenix Center is a facility for detox drugs and mental health, but in mental health, they don't help, able to help because their level is not up to the issues that are usually found. When you do go to IBC, which is involuntary, involuntary commitment papers, you are taken to the ER when you are, where you are to be evaluated. In North Carolina, they have up to 72 hours to form this evaluation. It took me longer to fill out the papers before ER doctor had released him from this facility. My grandson is now in jail for calling 911 too many times for arrest in the last two months. Yes, you can be arrested for making 911 calls. The police have been wonderful. They know it is a cry for help, but there is nowhere in Cleveland County for these people. National studies show that 40% of the people that are incarcerated are there, are mentally ill. So, and, um, for the lack of facilities in Cleveland County, this is, there's nowhere for them to go. In 2021, Tim Moore gave Cleveland County money for projects such as $59 million for the courthouse, $50 for the crisis pregnancy center, $1 million for the college prison site, $5 million for the health center, $2.2 million for the American Legion, $4.9 for the Cleveland County Athletic Association. Nowhere in this funding that Tim Moore gave us was the mention of mental health, and we are in dire need of this. What I'm asking and hoping that there'll be a coming together of the Mental Health Association, which consists of Phoenix, Monarch, and Partners, and other facilities. Also, the police and Atrium Health. I would ask that if there's any way possible that you could help me and others to fix this situation in Cleveland County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Robert Williams.
Robert Williams, 814 East State Coach Trail in Fallston. What I want to talk about tonight was about the minutes for the April 18 meeting. Two things especially. One is the commissioners have basically made themselves, brought themselves into the fair business. I think that's a big mistake. The Fair Association is running for 100 years. The only real problem they had that I know of was with the E. coli outbreak a few years ago that caused one death and 100 injuries. What saved Cleveland County then was that the commissioners, the county itself was not involved that much with running the fair, and the Fair Association was running the fair. That saved a ton of money for the county, but the insurance company had to pay out billions of dollars. Now, the county has decided that they're gonna somehow not be involved with giving the fair a million dollars. And the county, I think the way it says here is the Board of Commissioners will have final approval for the improvements, the improvements are gonna be for safety. If we have somebody stub their toes and it gets infected, we've got legal liability now that we can't get out of. And you've got an attorney over there, so maybe she or Tim can explain that a little bit more. The next thing is your closed session at the last meeting. There's procedures you go through for closed session. There's laws, there's general statutes that says what you have to do, what you could, what you have to, the things that limit what you can go in closed session for. It appears from the minutes you went into closed session properly. Problem is, you never exited your closed session. Typically, when you come out of closed session, you'll go back into open session. You'll have a vote. There's nothing in the minute shows any of that. Typically, what you say, once you come back and you say, we went in closed session, if nothing was done, you say nothing was done. No action was taken, none of that. So technically, you guys are still in closed session from the minute, from a meeting a couple weeks ago. And also, you adjourned the meeting while you was in closed session. So you've got a procedural problem. And these, these attention to details are things that's gonna save or cost Cleveland County tons of money in the future. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. The consent agenda tonight, we have several items on it. First item is the approval of the minutes from the April 18, 2023, regular commissioners meeting. Item B is from the Finance Department. There's a, this is a budget transfer summary as required by North Carolina general statute. All internal transfers shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners. The budget transfers summary from March 24 through April 21 of 2023 is included in your packets tonight. So the Waste Department is receiving a budget allocation for $17,435 in grant funds, and these monies will be used for electronic. these monies will be used for electronic trailers at our... The next item D is from the Planning Department, and it is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, and it is a request to amend the Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance and modify language regarding the one mile radius permitted for RV parks. The Section 12161 of UDO lists development standards for recreational vehicle parks, and there is a separation, there is separation wording in there for a mile radius between parks. Language in the ordinance prevents current parks from expanding beyond the parcel the park is currently in. James and David Gibson are asking to remove this language that defines parks as existing on one parcel only. This amendment, if approved, would not eliminate the one mile radius between parks. Item E on the consent agenda is tied to item D. If approved, if item D was approved, item E will be to request a cert, a public hearing for Tuesday, June 6th, and this is, will be a request to rezone property on Davis Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use for an RV park expansion. Again, James and David Gibson are requesting to change a 6.7 acre section of parcel 55397 to neighborhood business conditional use in order to accommodate 20 additional RV sites on a parcel that adjoins a current RV park that they own. Item F is Planning Department. This is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, and it's a request to amend the Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance definitions and table of uses to allow microbreweries as a permitted use in the rural agricultural district. Currently breweries are categorized as beverage and tobacco product manufacturing in the UDO and permitted only in the heavy industrial district. The amendment will define and separate microbreweries from beverage and tobacco product manufacturing category and allow them in rural agricultural district with a zoning permit. Several uses already in existence in the, and permitted in the rural agricultural district include wineries and distilleries. Item G on the consent agenda goes along with item F, and it is a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023 for case 2311. It's a request to rezone property at 956 St. Point Road from residential to rural agricultural conditional use for a microbrewery. This is, item H is a planning, is from the Planning Department also. It's a request to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, and it's a request to rezone parcels at 111 Kelso Drive from restricted residential to residential. Steve McSwain is requesting to rezone six parcels containing 38 acres from residential, restricted residential to residential. All the parcels are adjoining and sit between Crow Road and Betis Road, Beddys Road, south of Earl. Item I is from the County Manager's Office. It's a great grant resolution. Spectrum Southeast was awarded a growing rural economies with access to technology grant award, the great grant award, to deploy broadband services to approximately 1,120 households and businesses in Cleveland County. An agreement between the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, Spectrum Southeast LLC, and Cleveland County is ready for signature. And with that, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you've been presented the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions?
If not, I'll make a motion. We approved the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those favor will say aye. Any opposed will say no. The hearing is unanimous. Next item we have is a public hearing. About a quarter.
After a public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments on the public are to be directed to the Board of Commissioners. There should be no comments made to other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes the speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after another speaker has spoken. The original presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation of any speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right, I can say again, we have one item tonight, so I recognize our Planning Director, Chris Martin, who will come forward and present Planning Department case 23-06. This is a request to rezone property at 1129 Charville Road from neighborhood business to general business. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman Gordon. Good evening, Board. We have for your consideration a request to rezone property tonight. The property, or the applicant is Dr. Stephen Jones and Patrick Kim, and they're asking to rezone property that Stephen Jones owns at 1129 Charville Road from neighborhood business to the general business zoning district. Property's on Charville Highway between Shelby and Waco, just north of the 180 intersection where the future bypass will be connecting. It's on the, the northwest side of the road, and you can see from the aerial photo, it's surrounded by some larger tracts of land, some rural residential uses, and then there's some commercial uses near the intersection. So the current zoning district is neighborhood business, and that district is, the purpose of that, that district is to accommodate small scale services to a community around it. The requested district is general business, and the purpose of that district is to provide larger scale commercial uses and services, including wholesale, wholesaling and warehousing to a much larger capacity in a larger area. And you usually find this zoning district along these highways like Highway 150, Charville Road, which this property is located. This parcel being on the highway also enjoys the uses that are permitted in the corridor. So there, and that, that district already allows a lot of retail and commercial style of uses. So the petitioner is basically asking to go from the small scale commercial with the corridor to the general business scale commercial and retain the corridor uses. You can see from the zoning map we have displayed that the surrounding districts are really a mixed bag. You've got a lot of different colors there, and they mean a lot of different districts. So you're, you're going to find a lot of residential uses in the area and commercial as well. Our land use plan designates this area as future growth for the county, and it's expected that this area would enjoy the most intense type of development. And then, when we created that map, that, that plan designated the areas around the future bypass as this primary growth area. So this parcel does fit within that plan or in that map, and the requested zoning district is a consistent district with that type of designation. We've presented this case to the Planning Board. They voted unanimously to approve it. They noted that it's consistent with the land use plan, that general business is typically found on your arterial roads such as 150. General business seems to be compatible with that area with future bypass, with an exit ramp being there near the property, and that you already have the neighborhood business and the corridor highway commercial uses allowed in the area and on the parcel. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone on the Board have questions for Chris before we open the public hearing?
I do. Looking at, I think it's probably a good move for this gentleman, because I knew where he was at before in his situation. My question is, if we open it up to general business, there's a lot of different classifications could be put into it. My concern is, would we wind up with another area like down Buffalo Creek coming in on 74? Can that be with general business plus, what do you call it, with restrictions on it?
Conditional use?
Conditional, general business conditional use.
So the request is a traditional style request, so your only option is to approve or deny as it was requested, which was the general business zoning district. So conditional would not be an option. The uses, and again, the uses that are allowed in general business do not include the industrial type of uses, what I think you were referring to on the Highway 74, Buffalo Creek. So that type of use would not be allowed in this district.
Even with some of the businesses that it allows, is site plan, screening, different things added to that in it?
Yes. When, when a commercial property is developed that abuts a residentially zoned property, there are some screen requirements. Our staff, we would require a site plan presented to our office to show how the property is going to be developed once the, the owner at the time, or once, once the owner's ready to develop the property, they'll submit that plan to show where the, the driveway is going to be. That would be shared with the NCDOT to make sure access is safe for both the people coming in and going out. And then we would also evaluate for any county ordinances like the landscape screening and setbacks for property lines.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Stay close, Chris. If there's no one else, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 23-06, this is a request to rezone property at 1129 Charville Road from neighborhood business to general business, please come forward and state your name and address. Read this again. So again, anyone wishing to speak for or against planning case 23-06, this is a request to rezone property at 1129 Charville Road from neighborhood business to general business, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, then the public hearing is now closed. Are there any other questions before we call a question?
If there are, we know if there was, I will make a motion that we grant the rezoning.
So your motion is to grant the rezoning? Do they got, okay. So I have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Any other questions or discussion?
This piece of property, with it being on 150, in the long range plans, I think there's a plan somewhere down the road to make that road widen to four lanes. So I'd have concerns if I was going to use that property, am I going to lose it somewhere down the road? May not, probably won't be in my lifetime, the way the highway department moves, but, but I still feel like it's, it's proper to grant this.
Any other questions or comments? Chris, do you have something you need to add?
I do not.
But it's, it's in the corridor anyway, so they could probably put pretty much anything there that we'd be approving tonight, right?
The, I would say that the difference between the requested district is you get the addition of warehousing and distribution.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those favor will say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. We're moving on to regular agenda. So first item, or only item on the regular agenda for the night, is the Shelby Cleveland County Regional Airport. Mr. Ben Yarborough.
I'm Ben Yarborough, Assistant City Manager with the City of Shelby. Tonight, we're going to give an update on the airport and specifically the airport layout plan. So we'll start with a very brief history, though. The, looking through historical records, we found an airport layout plan that was created in 1945. That was 14 years before the airport was constructed in 1959 by the City of Shelby. Through those, from that time up until 2007, there were multiple private operators, and then in 2007, several changes that were very critical happened. The name was changed from Shelby Municipal Airport to the Shelby Cleveland County Regional Airport. The city began operating the airport with city staff, and there was a focus on economic development and what the regional impact of the airport could be. Couple of facts about the airport. It's a 5,002-foot runway. It's open to air traffic 24 hours a day. We have self-serve gas and Jet A. You see there about 33,500 gallons of self-serve ABG and 28,500 gallons of Jet A per year. Currently, there are 72-based aircraft. The city owns eight hangars and 62 aircraft currently leased spaces that generates revenue to pay the bills there. And then there's one commercial tenant providing aircraft maintenance on the field. So, back in one second. So with that, there's two sides to the airport. One is the operations and one is the facilities. You know, the focus can't be on one or the other. Our operational side, I have Jack Poole here with me tonight. Most of you know him. Does a phenomenal job on the operations side and providing a high level of customer service every day. As we look at facilities more tonight, we can't forget that operational side and how important that is to customer service and having people want to return to your airport. So on the facility side, airport layout plan is a 20-year master plan that is the basis for your growth and development of the airport. These plans are recommended to be updated every five to seven years, and from the North Carolina Division of Aviation, you must have an approved ALP to be eligible for grant funding. Our last ALP prior to the one that was very recently approved was in 2007, so it's 16 years old. From that time, we'll go through it in a minute, there's been many projects completed, and not only based on time, but based on those completions, it was due for an update. There on the right side of the screen is actually a piece of that 1945 airport layout plan. So it is, it is interesting for sure. Little bit of history on the airport layout plan. We were granted a grant from the North Carolina Division of Aviation in 2019. Grant total was $250,000, and there's 10% local match, it was split between the city and county. That partnership that started in 2007 has been critical. With that, WK Dixon, who is our airport consultant, began work on this in May of 2020. The city staff and airport advisory board went through many iterations, comments, and dialogue with consultant and other airports to determine what was, what were the best options for our airport moving forward. And then in May of 2022, we submitted our draft airport layout plan to the North Carolina Division of Aviation and FAA, and then we finally received approval on that in January of 2023. So it's obviously a very lengthy process. There's a lot of factors involved there, but the key there is making sure that we have a good plan to set up for the next 20 years. So the 2007 airport layout plan is here, and some completed projects on that plan. So back to the plan. Fuel farm was upgraded. Parallel taxiway was widened and created more separation from the runway to meet FAA standards. Terminal building was constructed. Terminal marking area was completed following the building. Apron rehabilitation and helipad projects were completed. Hangar purchase, that's a 100 by 100 hangar. Another 100, another 50 by 75 hangar purchase. Runway overlay was completed, which added asphalt to runway and increased the strength. Three T-hangers were completed as part of one project, and then a fourth T-hanger was completed following that. On the T-hanger projects, just to note, there are 10-unit... are 10-unit buildings, so the three in that first phase equal 30 units. All of those were leased out with deposits prior to completion of the project. So going into the fourth one, we had a waiting list. With that, once again, those 10 spaces were leased out with deposits prior to that building being completed. Currently, all 40 units are filled with a waiting list of about six right now that are waiting on next space to become available. So the success of that has been great. With the based aircraft, that number was from about 45 to 72 currently, largely, very largely, in relation to that project. Couple of the projects, the AB gas fuel farm that I mentioned, the parallel taxiway that's shown there with the arrow. The terminal building was obviously a very major project and the hub of all activity out there. Many of you may remember that building. And going from this building to that building in 2010, we've had numerous visitors to the airport that travel the state that regularly comment on our building being as nice as anywhere in the state. And so that's always good to hear there. The parking area and apron rehabilitation projects that were completed one year after the terminal building. Runway overlay, which resulted in new asphalt and new pavement markings that were very faded and provided safety concerns. This is both phases of the T-hanger where all four buildings are there. The first phase was completed in 2019 and the second phase in 2022. And then a couple of other projects, the helipad which I mentioned, obstruction removal has occurred, perimeter fencing, land acquisition, and then the two hangar acquisitions that I mentioned earlier. So with the airport layout plan, and all of those projects were projects that were completed based on that 2007 plan. So now moving forward into the 2023 plan, some of the considerations and tasks associated with that are to identify the airport goals and objectives, to look and see what the general aviation growth and needs of the area are, to determine the runway needs of the future. And all of these things, we're looking at that 20-year window. To identify the runway protection zones and safety areas, to look at the lighting and navigational aids, to look at various terminal and hangar area alternatives, identify other obstructions, to look at future land acquisition needs, and then lastly, look at the geography and climate and how that affects the approaches. So several projects that are included on that 2023 plan, taxiway overlay and direct-access realignment. And there is a plan in just a second that'll show pictures of these, just a little more clear. Like I said, land acquisition, T-hanger development. So we've built the first four. The question immediately was, where will the fifth, sixth, and the other T-hangers go? So this plan addresses that. Corporate hangar development, runway five extension, airport entrance road relocation, which would approve the angle that it ties in with Highway 150, to complete the perimeter fencing, and then a terminal expansion, once again, looking at that 20-year window. So this is the overall plan, and it shows all of those projects that were just mentioned. You can see, if you sort of divide the airport right in the center, the area to the left is the general aviation, and to the right is the commercial and business side. That's very intentional to keep those uses separate and to air traffic flow and everything that goes with that. T-hanger five, like I said, that's the most common question we have is right here, six and seven. And so there are plans that would allow for that when the need and funding are there. This is more zoomed in view of that. Like I said, the general aviation and then the commercial business side, there is the relocation, Highway 150, that is better alignment. The parallel taxiway project right here is a direct-access removal. And so as you are taxiing in a plane from the apron, come down, and then you can go straight to the runway, which is no longer allowed by FAA standards. It's, current method is to make you turn onto the taxiway and then make a 90-degree turn onto the runway, and then make another 90-degree turn, sort of like merging into traffic for a vehicle. It's a much safer option to create that stop condition where people look versus just merging onto a road, which is the same thing as an active runway. So that is all I have on the operations and facility side of it, but do want to make you aware of a couple of events that the airport has upcoming in 2023. We have a fly-in and open house on June 10. That event has grown through the years. I've seen most of you out there. It's had a great turnout of support, so encourage everybody to come out to that on June 10. And then the American Legion World Series, August 10 through 15. We support the flight activities with that there. Picture on the left is a T-28 Trojan that was used in the flyover, and then the Golden Knights parachute plane that we all watched fly over multiple times is there on the right. So with that, one of the things that we've had discussions with the Division of Aviation is something that we can all be proud of, is the partnership that has been developed between the City of Shelby and Cleveland County on the airport. Brandon talked earlier about economic development. There's been the partnership there and the Shelby building and the success there. There's been the partnership here with the airport and the success here. I get calls regularly from other airports asking how we've done what we've done, largely from that 2007 timeframe through current, which matches the economic development timeframe. And so that partnership is something that both the City of Shelby and I know the county are proud of. The results speak for themselves, but I do want, or did want to point that out very specifically. And so with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Ben. Board, do you have any questions?
I would just like to probably repeat what you just said, that the airport is such an asset, and, you know, we pay 5%, the city pays 5%, and we get all these benefits. The, I guess, federal and state government pays the 90%, and then we just keep growing and growing. And all those airplanes and those T-hangers you keep building, where people pay taxes on those quarter of a million-dollar airplanes sitting over there, and it's just an asset to all of us, and it helps our economic development. I think it's something we'd really be proud of, and I appreciate the update.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think you're doing a real good job. You talk about the terminal building. You know where the sister building's at.
Where is that?
Ringwood, South Carolina.
That is true.
It's identical to that building because Commissioner Hawkins had his own plane, and we were talking, and he said, "Come on." So he took and flew me down there, and landed, and got out hooked. He said that he hadn't went and took pictures, and that's what they modeled. That all of it is basically the same building down there that's here. But it was very successful, and I liked the terminal because, like you said, we may have a major company come in and only have a day to show them something, and you've got a conference room set up that we can take the companies in, make our presentation, and you'd be surprised how many times that the different companies had commented, "Hey, this has been nice. We haven't had that anywhere else," and it has been a turning factor that we have received businesses because they knew that they can blame their corporate people in the airport and conduct business at the airport without having to go elsewhere, fly into Charlotte and drive over. Was any plan in getting a Marshall flight at some point in time over the next 20 years?
That's not in this plan. That's largely driven by what the market demands are and what those providers are willing to do.
Appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
As we, as we continue to grow, the county grows, this airport's got to grow for us to continue to grow. And I think our economic development team is doing a good job, having the past. I think as the economy continues to grow, we're just in a prime spot to do better.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, do any of you have anything you'd like to report?
We've got several things going on, and I wanted to bring it up. I meant to bring it up earlier, but I got a call from a citizen came out about a farmer's market and wanted someone from the county to meet with them. They asked me if I would meet, but I got to thinking, I think it should be someone thought I'm carrying or somebody, because I don't have any directions and manage any employees. And we do have a couple of people that may have. Shirley Booker will be the contact point on it, and they wanted to do it pretty quick. So I think we should try to help them create some type of farmer's market if that's what they choose to do. So like I say, I feel like it's better for one of the staff to do it other than me.
Anyone else? Phil, Todd, you guys staff anything?
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, before we take a motion to adjourn, the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, here in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Is there a second?
Yes, sir, there was.
All right, all this fair will say aye. Anyone opposed? unanimous, and we're in adjournment.